...of the which stands, one nation, under God, in the desire of liberty and justice for all.
So, Mr. Dudley Levick, you wanted to just talk about in general some of the changes we made?
Yes, so there is a copy of the imposed code of conduct on this school website. I also left a hard copy for everyone, for the board members. There weren't tremendous changes in it. For the board members, if you were able to look at the comments that our legal counsel had left behind, there were a few minor changes as a result of a free speech court case at the Supreme Court level about freedom of speech. The Supreme Court did find on the side of a student who had posted something on social media, she had been suspended from her JVR cheerleading team. The Supreme Court actually found for the plaintiff on that. But they did still say that a district could suspend if it was severe bullying or harassment in this speech, or threats aimed at the school community. So we just made sure that our language backed that up. It really is continuation of mostly what we already had. Mrs. Doma had asked a few questions, so I just wanted to go through those very quickly. The first question, given the recent changes to marijuana in New York, do marijuana-related infractions fall under F1 of the infractions list? And I have responded, but I believe that we still would keep that under F3 because marijuana is not legal in any way on a school campus. It's still an illegal substance, it's still illegal for minors. So it still would go under that. Second question, when students have infraction-related drug or alcohol use, do we have an intervention that would have the student work with drug or alcohol counseling? Now, we don't have a specific position as a drug and alcohol counselor, but yes, if we have that type of infraction, that is a red flag. And not only would the student get a consequence, but they would be meeting with one of our support professionals, whether that is a guidance counselor, a social worker, or a school psychologist. And then there is follow-up, and very often that can mean outreach to the family as well as to the students themselves. So yes, we definitely look at that. I will say, we don't have a huge number of drug and alcohol-related offenses usually in districts. And then the last question, the beta definitions and categories is outdated. Beta changes in school safety and educational climate reports several years ago. So I did look at that new language. There's two ways the board can go with this. In the notes from our legal counsel, Allison actually said that we don't need to have those definitions in the code of conduct. So we can remove them if the board would like to do that. Or we definitely could update the language to match what's on state ed. It's not significantly different, but the language is a little bit streamlined for some of those definitions, which we have moved to the end of the code of conduct. It begins on page 34. So if you want to have some discussion on that, you know, we can go whatever direction the board would like to go with that. Other than that, most of the changes were just, you know, editing things that somehow we've missed after three years or four years of working on it.
You know, I just like the way that the tables put together, where it talks about student disciplinary consequences and those types of things. I think that's handled very well, and something that I looked at quite a bit. And it looked really good. It's not the first time we're previewing the manual either. It was made available at the whole last meeting to the board, so.
Any other questions, comments, public or the board?
Hold my mic. All right, now, at this moment in time, I need to call the executive session. For the purpose of, and I'm going to read what's for. Be resolved, Board Education, Executive Session to discuss the following: medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the employment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We'll be back just quick in a minute. In any topic related to the agenda made, be addressed except for personnel or specific student issues. School Board encourages public participation at its meetings to allow for proficiency in conducting meetings and to give each speaker a fair opportunity to present his or her views. The following shall apply to the public speaking portion of the agenda. Each speaker shall state it. Any questions or concerns be submitted in writing with the speaker's contact information, name, address, phone number. Each speaker shall be limited to a time, approximately 10 minutes, which is agreed upon by the board. The board will not permit discussions involving individual personnel or students. Direct all remarks to the chair. Community members may not call individual board members, nor debate other community members in attendance. Members of the community are encouraged to also present their comments in writing. I just wanted to go and mention it again. Undo interruption or other interference of the order of conduct of the Board of Education business will not be allowed. Famulatory or abusive remarks are always at a warning. So, does anybody participate in, you know, public commentary? Any questions regarding anything on the agenda as it sits for tonight? Going on to acceptance of reports. Be resolved, it's Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, approves and acknowledges reviewing the following reports. Board Ed meetings, Board Ed minutes for July 1st, 2021, which was our reorg meeting, and July 1st, 2021, regular meeting. Have a motion. Sue, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I have just one minute before the minutes just in July 1st. I think it's the reorg and the regular meeting, like the past is, was absent, but on the minutes, it wasn't reflected, so.
Right, so those revisions will be updated. Okay, thank you.
Actually, I thought it did say absent.
On the reorg.
Oh, the reorg did, but not on. Thank you.
We have the food service report and the school year 2021. Does anybody have questions regarding that?
I have a question just from a business perspective. So we usually have the $100,000 or around there that we usually have to transfer from the general fund to lunch fund. Because of the program this year and this past year and coming into this current year of the free lunches, do we still have that transfer and that expense? Or is that kind of gated because of that federal money that we're getting?
I'll double check, but I'm sure we probably still have the expense, just because.
I would expect that the deficit was probably even greater, simply because of the personnel costs still existed and you probably didn't have the same.
Even though it's three students, just for what we have to buy and then the labor.
I think you would have higher participation maybe, but maybe because half that year we were out, you probably negated that.
It's a very interesting dynamic.
I haven't done a study on it, but actually, you know, I saw a little bit that the students who bought lunch normally, once it was free, were bringing their lunch more.
Yeah, I think COVID, you know, had impacts to people, what they wanted to get.
Right.
I believe we actually had an increase in our breakfast participation and a decrease in our lunch participation.
We'd still like to see what was the end of the year balance, you know, positive or negative, just for answered question.
Thank you.
I think it's great news that it will continue to remain free throughout the year 2022. I think this is something that Mike has talked about for a long time, so let's just make it free.
Across the country, feed these kids in school.
Anything else?
Just a comment.
Thank you. Okay, personnel, resignations. Well, actually, personnel is a block. Be resolved, Board Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, accepts resignations, leave requests, leave replacements, appointments. And appointments for coaching also.
A through E.
A through E. Have a motion please.
Motion.
Sue, have it. Okay, do you have any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to table boys varsity basketball head coach.
That's under E, fourth, third, and down.
I second that.
Okay, and we will put that on hold.
So that's table.
That's table, okay. Any other comments?
I'm going to obtain from an appointment for middle school social worker, who happens to be a relation of mine, so I'm staying from that. Victoria Barone.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Just a comment, are we going to be able to continue our flex program now that?
Yes, yes, we transferred someone. Someone asked to be transferred, so we transferred someone from the elementary to the flex program, and they're taking over the flex program, so they know the expectation. And then we filled the elementary special.
Good question.
Yes, no good, special Olympics, and yeah. Okay. Okay, at this point. So first of all, I'd like to, you know, we have a great, you know, opening day for new teachers training today. It also continues tomorrow. I know we have a number of our hires here, teachers, support staff. So I'm going to ask, we'll start just right here, and if you could just, you do it for your teacher, so you have to, you know, stand up, just introduce yourself and what your position and or building is. So I'll start right here with Kalani.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kalani Samuel. I'll be the assistant principal at the Highland Elementary School with Principal Darling. I'm glad to be here.
Great, congratulations, great to have you. We'll go right down this way.
John Frazo, food service in the elementary.
Thank you, welcome.
Sam Valentino, middle school math and boy soccer.
Hey, great.
Kendra Elliott, special education teacher at the elementary school.
Sarah Coro, health education teacher at the high school.
Lindsay Welch, speech language pathologist, elementary, and classes at the end.
Cassie Lusha, special education teacher in the fourth grade ICT room.
Sean Donahue, English teacher at the middle school.
Eva Markman, school social worker at the high school.
Hi, I'm Stormy Gordon, and I'll be a food service helper in elementary school.
I'm Nadia Mulphill, special education teacher in middle school.
Anyone else?
Back row.
Hello, Samantha Zappone. I'll be a social worker in the elementary school.
Hi, Rick Thompson. Post crime.
Great, thank you.
Donna Logdell, secretary in transportation.
My last?
Thomas Moore, mathematics at the high school.
Great, welcome, everyone. As I said to most of you, you know, Highland is really, really is a special place. I've, you know, I've had the opportunity to work in other districts, and truly, the Highland is by far the best district I've had the pleasure of working in. It's a great family atmosphere, and the students, the community, the faculty, the staff, everyone is just so supportive, and it is all about relationships, as I mentioned this morning at our meeting. And I know that we will all be very successful here, so thank you and congratulations.
And I wish all of you a long and successful career in Highland Central School District. Thank you very much for coming to us.
Okay, so before we move on to anything else, you know, I'm going to excuse it. It's summer, you know, the limited time, so I'm going to excuse all the new hires. If you want to stay, you can, but we're not going to hold against that at this time.
Enjoy these last few days.
That's really cool, because I just wanted to see Mary Ann.
I know.
Business and operations, budget transfers. Be resolved, that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following budget transfers as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number 1032, amount $13,125, and that's to cover a cardiac life post A and D purchase. Budget transfer 1155, $21,000 to cover COVID expenses. Budget transfer 1156, $20,000, and that's for maintenance required at the high school. Okay, motion, Sue. Mike, any discussion?
Just real quick on the EDs, do we have staff members that monitor those periodically? I know we did in the past, and that individual has retired. Do they need battery changes and all that?
We actually contract through BOCSIS for part of that right now, yeah.
That's part of their check, right?
That's what this is, this is their check?
Yes, it's to update, yes.
All right, only because I spoke purchase, I thought we were buying.
Well, yes, we do need to buy too, because they have an end-of-life kind of thing. So, yeah, we're replacing ones that we have. I don't, do you know how many? I don't remember.
I believe it's close to 20. And athletics, athletics has probably more than that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Participation in New York State Deferred Compensation Plan. Be resolved, Board Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, moves the following New York State Deferred Compensation Plan as follows. Whereas Highland Central School District wishes to adopt the Confed Compensation Plan for employees of the state of New York and other participating public jurisdictions for voluntary, for the voluntary participation of all eligible employees. Whereas Highland Central School District is a local public employer eligible to adopt the plan pursuant to Section 5 of the state financing. Whereas the Highland Central School District has reviewed the plan established in accordance with Section 457, the Internal Revenue Code, in Section 5 of the state financed law, Section 5 of the state finance law of the state of New York. Whereas the purpose of the plan is to encourage employees to make and continue careers at the Highland Central School District by providing eligible employees with a convenient and tax-favored method of saving on a regular and long-term basis, and therefore provide for their retirement. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Highland Central School District hereby adopts the plan for voluntary participation for all eligible employees, and it is further resolved that the appropriate officials of the Highland Central School District are hereby authorized to take such actions and enter such agreements as are required or necessary for the adoption, implementation, and maintenance of the plan. And it is further resolved that the Administrative Service Agency is hereby authorized to file copies of these resolutions and other documents with the President of the State of New York Civil Service Commission. This is adopted, and adopted on the 17th day of August 2021 at a meeting of the Highland Central School District Board of Education. Can I have a motion, please? Camille, second by Mike. Any discussion?
Who would this affect? Who could take the deferred compensation? We have the unit members, so who would be the ones that would benefit by this?
My understanding is this allows anyone to be able to fund their retirement account and allows the school to take those funds from their check and directly deposit.
So it's for everybody?
It's good, it's all pre-tagged.
This is a common. This is the first time we've passed this one.
We've passed this one, we passed, I don't remember.
No, I don't think we have. This is the first time I think we've actually.
Perhaps the language changed in the, Mrs. McLaren just wanted to clarify.
Don't be called deferred compensation, but it's been out there for years.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Sue Carey. Okay, tax levy and tax warrant. Be resolved, that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following 2021, 2022 real property tax levy and library tax resolution as attached and presented to the board at this meeting. Motion, please. Sue? Camille?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Very well put together, and not much of an impact rule.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Sue Carey. Sarah?
All right, well, as you noticed, we've been doing a lot of hiring the last few weeks, so that's, that's been a lot of our time. And as Mr. Bonjovi mentioned earlier, I spent today with all of our new teachers at our new teacher orientation. They'll be coming back tomorrow. The two days are really a mix of district vision, expectations, nuts and bolts of, you know, how do you behave, how do you do insurance, getting them set up on their technology, their badges, you know, having an opportunity. This is one of the largest groups we've had in one year in a long time. So, you know, an opportunity for them to get to know one another. I mentioned at the beginning of the day that, you know, I've been in Highland for a long time now, and many of the teachers that I started with my first year have remained my good friends all the way through. You know, you kind of form that bond when you first start, because you become each other's support system. So we got started with that today. It was a really successful day. They were here from 8:30 till 3:00. We like to build in. They had lunch with our administrative team, so that they, even though, you know, they're not necessarily going to see Matt Darling on a regular basis, they at least can recognize that, you know, Matt is one of our administrators. Tomorrow morning, we'll have breakfast with all of our administrative assistants, so all of the secretaries within the district will have breakfast with all of our new teachers. So again, you know, so they meet the real people in charge of the, of the district. And we've mentioned earlier, Mr. Bonjovi mentioned, you know, we really think of Highland as being a family, and that's part of it. It's creating the connections, not only within your, your teaching colleagues, but with people across the district. So really, building relationships has been the theme of the, of the two days. So that's, that's where we are at. We're finalizing our opening day's agendas, September 1st and September 2nd, for all of our staff, you know. Because we have a lot of mandated trainings to do, there will be a lot of that happening on September 1st. But then they'll have time in their buildings to do some work. Dr. LeBlanc will be doing work with each of the buildings and the different other departments, transportation, food service, custodial, on September 2nd. And then again, the buildings each have more specific committee work that's happening, depending on the needs of the building. So we have a lot planned for those first couple of days. And then until September 7th, we have students in the building, all five days in person. So that's really exciting. We're very happy to be having them back in person, even if we have to wear masks. But we're getting there, heading down the whole stretch.
Yes, President Miller, thank you. So the obvious thing is the masks. So we were waiting for some official word, not necessarily just from, you know, from what we hear in the news. So Mark Ryder did make an announcement finally this afternoon that we will have to wear masks, so we'll put out an announcement, an official announcement tomorrow to faculty, staff, and families in Highland. So we will be wearing masks, we'll be doing the social distancing as much as possible. So we're not going to, the shields are not required, we're not going to have the plexiglass up. At the moment, students do not need them outside, but they do need them on buses and in the building. So faculty, staff, students will have masks. As far as sports, I know that I would say met today, and Section 9 will be, you know, putting out what the rules are as far as sports and mask wearing. So I don't have a specific answer for that today, because I know they just were talking about that this afternoon. I just want to give you an update, so Mrs. McLaren is preparing an RFP. I've reached out to a few doctors, this is in relation to our trainer. So I did speak to one doctor, obviously I'm not going to mention any specific names, and I've been playing phone tangos with a second doctor. So we'll specifically send to those doctors the RFP to be our new school physician. In the meantime, certainly, I met with the trainer, interviewed her, the candidate with the committee pick, and that person is on hold, okay? The Support Services Committee met this afternoon, I can review for the whole board. So our closeouts, so we have two companies, CB Strain and Darling, that we still need to get final closeouts, but that paperwork and the process is all underway for the closeouts. We did last Monday and Tuesday, CSR's, the building condition server that we have to do. And so we'll be working off of that to, you know, discussions of another project, which we're not really ready to get into full discussion with tonight about, unless we want to. We didn't prepare for that tonight. The fold, so the roofs of the lobbies, so again, the actual, the tin roof or the metal roof is done. There is still an issue of, you know, there is a leak somewhere in the roof, and it's been kind of battled back and forth. Really, with, you know, it's kind of like when you're pairing an engine. You really have to eliminate, you have to take steps to eliminate things. So really, what we have to do is, we have to wait for the tropical storm Fred to pass through finally. And next week, the hope is then to do a, like a scan of the building, a heat scan, a thermal scan, so we can see where, if any, there's some penetration of water. The central office canopy, so we are still coming in this side door, but they're working on the canopy. So the metal framework was up, and then last week, or the week before, they were putting the bricks, which matches the building, around the posts. We were not happy with the quality of the work, neither was our architect. So the company that did that is agreeing to, what not cost to us, to tear it down. to tear it down and redo that brickwork. It was not satisfactory to what it should be. So that is, everyone is in agreement on that. The sidewalk, that will be, we're going with an outside contractor at the moment. Not the one that's doing the work, because we're gonna redo, we're gonna match the new sidewalk up to the canopy. This new sidewalk that comes up to the corner, and we're gonna connect that to the canopy. So it all, you don't have old sidewalk in with the new sidewalk. There are a few other issues. They went through the punch list, and there's a few items they still need to finish up. There's still an issue with the lighting neutral at the elementary school that we're working on. We have another Support Services meeting on the thirtieth of August at 1:00 P.M. Is there anything I left out? From the Support Services board? Okay. In your information packet, there is a sample, this draft, of a consent agenda. Now, tonight's agenda is mostly appointments, so it's not a great one to compare it to. But we had talked about last week, possibly moving to a more consent agenda, which a lot, many schools do. So this is what, what tonight's agenda would have been. So it would have been, you know, the public hearing, the exact session, the public comments, of course, acceptance of reports. And then consent agenda would have been all those appointments, then including the transfers, including what President Miller read, and it would really go all the way to Mrs. Dolan McCallum. So that would have been the next thing. Okay? What a consent agenda means for the public and for the board, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but my use of consent agenda is that if a board member wants to discuss something, they certainly can, you know, sever an item to discuss it. But besides that, there's no discussion on consent agenda. It's all favor, all oppose, boom. And the point is to speed up meetings so that you can have, right? So we have, once school starts, we will get back to, you know, students of the month, when, when, now the students are back. And we'll have the monthly presentations on educational topics. So it does give more time for that.
It does also hold the board a little more accountable as far as you need to communicate any concerns regarding the consent agenda or changes you might want to see ahead of that meeting.
Yeah, because it, it's pointless to make a consent agenda and then have a lot of discussion.
Whenever you're gonna post it to the public, so as soon as you're gonna post it to the website, we gotta work from that day back, or the day before back, for any of those discussion items.
It works very well in my other board. And you are so right. All items of concern or any questions are brought up to the administration beforehand.
And I think that works. I think just to, you know, a point that one of the board members made earlier in the day, I think we need to hold a date then that we can have, because, I mean, I work all day, so stuff's getting added today. I can't look at it before the meeting. So I mean, we need to have a date.
Right, that shouldn't happen.
Except if it's, you know, we're in a bit of a hiring as long as it's because of the number of positions.
Right.
But understood, I agree.
Yeah.
But I, I think my only concern, and it's no reflection on Lisa, but most of the time, the agenda comes out on Friday, because the agenda meeting's on a Thursday, sometimes Friday morning. The agenda doesn't come out until Friday, or maybe Saturday morning at night, but mostly Friday. Our meeting's on Tuesday. So there's one day, I'll speak to, that you can question the administrative staff to get your answer back. So it really doesn't give you a lot of time. You gotta do your due diligence and then jump on it first thing Monday morning. But like you said, some people work in the morning. You'll have access to, you know, email and be able to have that conversation back. I, I, I have no problem with it. I mean, we.
It's okay to happen on a Friday. You gotta post it earlier, that, you know, there's.
Well, then you have to move your agenda to probably Tuesday. So at least you can get it out on the web.
It's true. You have ample time to review, question, and have those discussions. It's not a twenty-four hour gig.
But I mean, in the volatile time, or a time when there's a lot of decisions like this coming here, changes, beyond that point, you're still gonna have them. How do we address them?
You know, option is to, to, to another meeting, right? Do another meeting, that's not for the other district. We could do that extra meeting just to, I know it's, you know, time, but if you have an extra meeting, that we have time.
You get the fore around the table usually, you know.
Yeah, a quick meeting just to approve appointments. Because I was, I probably just thought, like, we need the time to do it. It's, it's a lot.
The real format of our meeting should be, and we've been away from that, you know, I blame myself too, but your first meeting should be a workshop meeting. And then your second meeting is your business. So your workshop meeting is when you discuss everything. And your business meeting is when you have your consent agenda and you approve everything. There's times during that workshop meeting that you have to make approval because time is over the essence. But that's normally how, I think, our Bible has been set up to organize our meetings with a workshop meeting and a business meeting.
That is so. I, I don't know if that model fits.
Yeah, no.
Twenty-one and beyond, that's what we're, they're all business meetings. We're always getting action on some work. Reviewing a transfer, approving a transfer. So I, I mean, I hear you. I just don't know if that applies.
It might not.
To the comment, to the speed of public education.
We do a lot of things in real time. We make a lot of decisions in real time. It's just, gonna, that part's gonna be tough.
Tradition.
No, I, I, yeah, I have no, no problem with it. I just think that for that to happen, and you, and you want to have your discussion outside of the board meeting for those consent items, we need to have those items up prior to the week.
And usually, if you want to take this, let's have a little flexibility on both sides for the first couple of meetings, but by that third or fourth one, we should hit some kind of stride. I know everybody's here is well-read. Because, you know, sometimes there's weekends I don't look at this stuff. But certainly, the Monday, I'm looking at it. And I would have a responsibility to.
Yep, it's my responsibility as a board member.
The good doctor down there, somebody.
And it, and it is, discussion wise, it's not so much discussion about what's on, but saying, okay, I want to pull this part out, right? But that's what it is. It's because you still need to have your discussion in public comments.
Taking something is okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what I, what I see, it adds the, the first item, the acceptance of reports, second becomes part of the consent agenda, and then, and then the after business and operations with their personnel is always there, you know, over the block.
I don't have anything else to say. I'm, Mr. President.
Well, that's pretty good.
I just have a few quick questions or observations. So tomorrow, since we've received official mask mandates, tomorrow we'll be putting, I just see a lot out on social media about questions. Are we going back five days? What, so I just think we need to really make sure we're getting out there.
It'll be a complete review, yes.
Okay.
I'm really gonna wait for, now I haven't had any Dr. Corey yet. You know, Dr. Corey has not sent anything from post this yet.
Every couple of days, we're getting a little more guidance. So I'm, I'm gonna be honest, we're all kind of.
Yeah, until.
Once we really, if we have it filed, we will put a full plan together and send that out. So it might not be tomorrow, but it'll certainly be.
Because I see a lot of swelling.
Yes, the sooner the better.
I think the two things we, we know, which in COVID times, we know that also can change immediately. But we know that there's going to be mask K-12. And we know that we'll be five days a week in person. I, I think those are the two things, you know, unless.
And those are the two biggest questions.
Yeah, unless, you know, super big change and the government shuts down. I just don't see that happening right now.
I've just seen a lot of people saying, so is it five days? Is it not? And I just think it would be helpful, we could put something out as a district just to say, and also just some guidance, maybe also on kindergarten orientation and middle school, just what the plan is, even if we don't have dates, if we do have dates, whatever it is, but just making sure that we're getting out there in terms of communication.
Pretty sure the middle school letter went home, it either went home yesterday or today. That gives you a full, is a full description of everything.
So maybe just putting that out even, you know, not only just the letter to the parents, but also get that out on social media.
We have dates for those that we could announce tonight for.
Yes, um, yes. But let me double check them, because I wrote them down in my office, but.
There were a couple of.
They're, they're doing three different nights. And I will shoot Mrs. Coburn a quick text, and I'll let you know when I confirm. I don't want to give out the dates.
And selfishly or unselfishly, kindergarten orientation, just because with parents new to the district, a lot of parents are out there.
That mailing just went home on Monday.
Okay.
So all the kindergarten parents have a flyer about what the dates and times are.
So maybe even just put that on social media, just to get as much out there as possible.
And high school as well. And then just going back to what you mentioned about the COVID-nineteen safety guidelines, there was an article in the Kingston paper mentioning staff being tested weekly. Is that, is the paper or is that?
That's been thrown about, but I've not received that from Mark Ryder yet.
We believe it might be in their county recommendations, but we've gotten nothing about the process for that.
Dr. Corey reached out to Mark Ryder about that this afternoon, and he's waiting for a specific answer regarding the testing of staff.
One other thing, just a.
Yes.
Anything else, uh, other or?
Thank you.
Tom, I know you, you mentioned, like, the last meeting, that you got an email from one of the training organizers from the Labor's local. Have we followed up and are we moving forward with something? Again, I'd like to seriously consider, you know, moving in a direction of, of giving our students the, especially at the high school level, the opportunity to look to their future. And if it's not college and it's not the military, then it is a career, then, you know, the trades are, are looking for.
I was out of the area last week.
You know, I have a great apprentice program. I'm willing to, to, to work with a bill on that and take these students to a trip to their training facilities and, or bring them in here to, and that's something that they're starting to organize now.
Sure.
I just got a response from Mrs. Coburn about the middle school. So Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, so next Tuesday, will be sixth grade orientation. She didn't put times in. It's evening-ish, though. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, is seventh grade. And Thursday, the twenty-sixth, is eighth grade scheduled pickup. In talking with their sixth grade and seventh grade, we'll have a little bit more formal orientation because they didn't really get, you know, this, this, this year's seventh graders were sixth graders last year for COVID, and then, of course, the new sixth graders. So those will be a little bit more formalized. The eighth grader, it will be scheduled pickup. Like, those, those letters are going home. Like I said, they were either mailed out yesterday or today, and it's a full, it gives you the full details of what's gonna happen, what the timing of things are, where, we're holding it in the gym. She's actually doing it in, now I'm remembering how she did it. She's doing it in two, two, two groups, A through L, I think. Either A through K or A through L, and then, and it's going to be in the gym so that we can separate as much, best we can.
Is there also a ninth grade orientation, I assume?
We, we did have one June second and August thirtieth and the thirty-first. The letter is going home to tell the ninth graders and the tenth graders who are remote that they can come in and look around the building. We'll have some peer leaders here from ten to twelve.
Right, we did, we did a ninth grade orientation.
Yes, if we can get a, a social media post that maybe includes some links to kindergarten orientation, sixth grade orientation, and if there's anything for ninth grade, just to get that out to parents. We do provide the information on our website, but more and more, they're relying on us to push out information, right? They don't, they, nobody's reading. We're gonna read what was tweeted five minutes ago, and everything else was yesterday, right?
Back to the normal, whatever that is, as far as scheduling, at the middle school and high school, things are.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
That's a good question.
That's, uh, that's a good answer, thank you. Comforting.
Okay, new business. We have a pot of a press addendum to new business. Okay, be resolved that Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approves the proposed code of conduct for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two school year. We have a motion, please. Mike, impede it.
I think this is based on the public hearing.
Right.
So. So just one discussion item. I mentioned that the, the definitions, we can take them out of the code of conduct, or we can update the, the definitions that are in there, and then we, we move on. So I just, if the board has a feeling for what they would like to see in there.
You know, definitions are always ongoing. If you want to put a link in there that takes it to the state site, do that.
That's a good idea.
There's no need to have pages and pages of text that I.
Yeah.
You ready? Just put a little hyperlink in there.
Great.
I think that, yeah, makes it much easier to update from year to year. It just can go, you can check the hyperlink instead of changing four words in some definition. Great. Um, and just another comment. But we've been sending you, you know, if you looked at all markup in the version you got, it's from, goes back to like two thousand fifteen. What we're going to do this year is we're accepting all of the changes. So that next year, when you see it, you'll only see the changes from this, you know, this year's to next year's.
Appreciate the effort of reading five years.
Well, and sometimes it's hard to get the right version of it, so you can tell. I don't know, some, I, I don't know, sometimes I feel like I change it and then I open it up. And even just some of the, um, the formatting, when I, when I save it to PDF, it, I don't know. So Harley's gonna fix all that. All right.
I don't know, did we?
You just need, the, the, you just need to ask, all in favor?
Yeah, all in favor.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Also, under new business, we have the special education district plan.
Dr. Boyd, you want to just make any comments about that?
So this was the plan that was part of the policy that we had talked about at, at the end of spring. So, you know, some reading of that policy. And then this is just the plan that meets the requirements for that policy for the updated information. And this is something that we'll be updating every two years.
And it was something that, we had most of the things. It was just not all one place.
Compiling more of this into one place. And a lot of it is.
Oh, right, 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 right. I remember this. So this came out of a discussion at the Policy Committee. Because we were gonna improve, right? There's policy, seventy-six, ten. Special education plan, and the district indicated at that time that their policy, their, that their plan was there, but they needed to pull the pieces together.
So this is putting all that information together. A lot of it is pretty standard coming from the Part Two hundred regs. And a lot of that similar language that you'll see.
And when do you expect that to be completed?
This is it.
He's got it.
You've got it.
Exactly. That's, that was really an incredible, oh my God. I do have, just because I, I, I don't really understand all the mechanisms of, of, of special education. On, on page twenty-one, you, you write that there's an annual review of each student. But then, it, then it goes on that there's a comprehensive reevaluation every three years. And that just kind of, I didn't really understand.
So each year, we have an annual review to review the goals and how they did, and then to make a plan for the following year. But every three years, part of the requirement for receiving special education services is you have to have a reevaluation to ensure that you need the continuation of the services. So basically, each year, we have the annual review. We talk about how your progress. But every three years, we do a more comprehensive review of how you're doing. So it's more standardized testing. So some psychologists testing, especially some academic testing. So we have new numbers to look at, just to make sure that those numbers are kind of matching what we're seeing on the yearly progress as well.
I, that's the real idol of the thing, is a very in-depth.
And should the need arise, they're not gonna wait three years. Like, if they're seeing gaps, and if it's going the other way.
Right, and and we'll, we'll also do it if we're looking to declassify a student. So if we're saying, you know, this student has made less growth, they don't require special education services anymore. Sometimes we'll do some additional testing just to ensure that that's the case.
That's really something. And I guess my other question was of the preschool services, direct services versus indirect services. And my question is, are we involved in choosing the preschool for the child?
Yes and no. So over the last, about two years ago, the county pushed more of the responsibilities to us. So prior to that, you know, we would kind of facilitate the meetings, determine what level of service a preschool student would need, and then the county worked to help place the student. So two years ago, they said, okay, that is now the responsibility of the district. So now we help facilitate to find if it's an OT provider, a speech provider, or a program. So we're making phone calls to Learning Together, to any other agency. Hey, do you have openings for a four-year-old student in any of this program? So when we have, uh, parents with a couple of options, we'll talk to them. You know, they visited this placement, this placement, this placement. What are you thinking? So we work together with them, with the county, with the agencies, to try to match it best. And sometimes it's based on enrollment, where there only may be an opening at one place. Or maybe they're on a waitlist in one agency, and they're receiving services from someone else until an opening comes back.
Does this usually start at age three?
It can start before age three.
Or even earlier.
Yeah, depending on the birthday of the window, so.
And documentation.
Yeah, early intervention services will carry students from the county to, they say typically the age of three, but depending on the birthday, they can start a little bit earlier to try to line up with, similar to semesters in a way, of like September and January. So, but it will start, but sometimes we, so sometimes we receive referrals from parents who are two in anticipation of the third birthday coming up, and sometimes parents will come to us when they're four or five, saying, you know, we're just noticing a deficit now.
This is very good reading. Thank you. And this, this will be put on the web, on a whole page?
Yep.
And we'll take all the old stuff down and put this, okay.
Any other questions? Uh, old business.
Are we?
You don't have to adopt that.
You don't?
The board does not have to adopt that.
But just the, we have to.
But the policy you'll adopt.
Yeah, yes.
Old business. Highland Central School District Policy 8000 Series, the second reading. Be resolved that board education upon the recommendation superintendent approves the following Highland Central School District policies as presented to the board at this meeting. Number 8130, equal educational opportunities, and number 8340, textbooks slash workbooks.
And I guess my question still remains.
Yes, I have responses to that.
Okay.
So if you, I don't know, do we need to move it at that discussion?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, move it.
Second it.
There we go.
Yeah, real quick, I think that has been a third reading, no? Could we start a reading last month of the other train?
Oh, you're right, right.
Of the five groups, so this should be the third reading.
So this should be third reading instead of second.
So it's a third reading, okay. And I don't have attached, though, for the board, the, um, and if there was any revisions from the second reading.
Well, that's what I'm going to explain.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Yeah, so the first question that Sue had was for policy 8130, equal educational opportunities. And the language from this, the question was, the last sentence of the first paragraph just reads differently regarding the Boy Scouts could be omitted. So I'm going to read you the last paragraph, and this is, the whole policy is about providing equal.
Patriotic youth groups, right?
Yes, and so the language says, um, it's named of many, many different categories right before it, and the district provides equal access to its facilities to any group officially affiliated with the Boy Scouts of America or any other youth group listed in Title 36, parentheses, as a patriotic society, and parentheses. So I did check with legal counsel, and that's specific language from them. This was sent to us from, from legal counsel, and I, I believe it goes back to some sort of.
To keep it in.
Yeah, so we need to keep that in. So, so that one, um, has, that one should go through with no changes. All right, so that's that one. And the second question was, uh, policy 8340, which relates to textbooks and workbooks. And Sue's question, um, there's a couple of questions. The first was the description of a workbook, and in the, in the policy, it says, "The term workbook shall refer to a type of book that provides spaces to write in and is consumed each year. It is usually paper-covered and designed to be used in connection with a textbook." And Sue's question was kind of along lines of that sounds kind of dated for a definition of workbook.
They still use consumable workbooks.
Yeah, you know, a lot of times we call them consumables, um, so, I mean, it is still accurate. We do still use them.
Would they be paper-covered?
I think instead of it being a hardcover textbook, I think that's what they're just trying to, you know.
They're saying a soft cover.
Right, because it's something that's basically going to get thrown away each year.
We can take over the cover part.
It's, no, it's tough when it passes legal muster. You can change it because they read it word for word.
Because you don't know why that someone questioned at some point what it was. And then Sue's second question.
Electronic texts are covered elsewhere, if that's what you're looking for.
Well, and that was her next question. There's no reference to electronic format or digital textbooks. And when we look at the first sentence in the policy where it defines textbook, it says, "The term textbook shall refer to a book or a book substitute loaned to a student for a fixed period of time for his or her use in connection with the study of a subject." I mean, I think that book substitute, if you wanted to, we could put in, i.e., digital or other, you know.
Some word to bring into the year 2021.
21st century, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I think we could add that, you know, for example, digital, so at least it would make a reference to.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Do we have your support to move forward and continue brainstorming?
Yeah, no, no, I, I will feed this to death, although it looks like I have.
No, and I do apologize. I didn't have that information for your last meeting.
We did get a motion in a second. Can we have that again with Mike and?
I, I think I gave the motion.
Mike did so, Mike did so. Please, I think you were a little busy at the time.
Yeah, thank you. I got that. Thank you for that.
I was interrupting you.
It's okay.
Anybody opposed? So Carrie. Okay, item number two, old business. Highland Central School District Policy 7610, second reading. Be resolved that board education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves the following Highland Central School District policy as presented to the board at this meeting. Policy number 7610, special education district plan. Motion, please. Sue, come in. Any discussion?
I think it's not a third reading as well.
I think you're correct. Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So Carrie. Miscellaneous, correspondence, I think some of us, maybe all of us, we haven't had that much conversation. There was an email that came out regarding people that want to be representatives of, um, on the Eric State School Boards Association, Area 9, I guess, which we're a part of. And there's a couple of people that have reached out to me. Have any, has anybody else got those emails?
Uh-huh.
There's one from the board.
Okay. So how do, do we want to, how do we want to proceed on this?
So we're up to two folks?
Yes.
Oh. Well, the recent one.
No, not today. Make forward it to.
Make forward it to me.
But I think the letter said that there's going to be electronic voting by the end of the month, so.
So is this something we do? We, we hope?
Never did, but yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, this has taken me by surprise, this.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with this either, but if you were like, I could reach out and get some ways on how to, um.
Let's reach out to school boards and see if they, you know, candidates are contacted. Is there two areas?
Right, I, I'm a little confused myself on it.
Right, let's see what that.
I believe there's at least two people running and soliciting our.
It sounds like they're gearing up for a lot of virtual type of work this year too, so they just might be expanding.
So.
I will follow up, and I will email you guys my conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Carol, is Carol here today? All right, there is a core report with practice.
So Mrs. Potts provided, we still have not gotten a detailed, and I called myself, we're still waiting on more detail, some are from the company, but Mrs. Potts gave a little bit more of a report of that shutdown we had on the internet.
Still pending.
Yes.
Okay, now we're at public comment.
Actually, I do have, whether it be miscellaneous or we move it and it stays on old business. I, I, I think old business would be more appropriate. Future capital project discussions. And if we could get a summary of what the Support Services Committee has been discussing so far. But I'd like to stay that because at what point do we engage the rest of the board or the community in what they might want to see as far as an investment, further investments in our schools? We're just trying to wrap up a very, very impressive investment. I know it's zero to the taxpayer, but I don't know if you saw the recent article regarding Kingston City Schools. What did they do recently?
I didn't see the article.
All right.
Is that new field?
What's that?
Are they doing a field?
No. They have taken a portion of some funds they've received, and they're going to commit it to climate control in their buildings, which is a massive investment. Air conditioning, heating, it's just, it's climate control.
Well, as far, Mike, as far as support service, we really haven't got any, any in-depth discussion. We're waiting for the building condition survey, and that's probably going to lead us to bringing it to the rest of the board as far as what their items, I think it's like a hundred and something items on there, maybe due to the buildings. The only thing that we did initially was with Bernie Donigan's office, is try to see what leveraging our, our building reserve against a new capital project and where we can be with that. But since then, since that meeting, which was probably back in May or June, Victoria, we really haven't decided on fund balance of where we're going to, how much we're going to put where, and that could change the whole intent of that project. But we haven't, and the support service.
Right, but we haven't really gotten that deep. And you've been working very hard to wrap up this $8000 project, knowing, and I'm also discussing a little bit, a future project. So we are moving that.
So is it, my hearing, it's premature to put something on the old business agenda called future capital projects discussions?
I would say you should go on the new business agenda.
Yeah.
Something I would put in.
I'll be at the next board meeting.
All right, let's see how this shakes out.
We have another support services meeting on the 30th, where we would have a little bit more time to at least start to talk. We have talked about kind of wish lists for both building and department, but we have not gotten any specifics.
Okay.
Just wish list.
The only other item I had before we moved to public comment then is on our district website. We started an outstanding climate and cultural racial equity initiative, but it has not continued. And I know we've done a lot of work. It goes up until, oh, I'm bringing it up, November 2020. So let's complete that timeline, because A, I'm proud of the work that the committee has done, and let's just keep that initiative moving forward. I know we're having some discussions along those lines this evening, but, you know, we're entering September of 2021, and there's a lot of work that was done, so if we can represent the idea, we should.
I'm going to go.
I made it right on time.
Change the class. Speaking of the old business, the worksheet that we received, I think it was a couple of meetings ago, in regard to the new money or the one-time infusion. I thought we were going to be discussing the use of that money of every meeting or so.
So about that COVID relief money?
Yes, yeah, I, I forget, yes, I forget the acronyms.
Yeah, the natural rescue plan and the other one.
Right. Because, you know, Alan, Alan, you know, thinking of what you said that night in regard to putting more money, more of this money into mental health services, and that, that kind of stuck with me. Because no sooner did you say that, that there was a big article in the New York Times, maybe about the next couple of weeks, in regard to the mental health stressors of students.
But we did tonight hire.
But so those are the hires.
You did, you hired sole workers.
Yeah, but it's just, I really think that's definitely focus the money, focus the money on that, and.
So we hired three social workers.
Yeah, one is actually a replacement.
So that was part of the, so two new social work positions were handed.
If there's even more, because I saw a lot of facilities, and I think Alan mentioned that as well, money being poured into the building or like new fencing, that maybe we could throw that into the capital project and maybe put more into.
Yeah, I think we could go through a little bit more, what some of the mental health part of it is. You know, the one hesitation we have with hiring staff is that it is grant-funded. So, you know, we have to really think carefully about, you bring people in and then you have to, or do we try to work that into our stuff?
Well, they should know they're, right?
Yes.
Grant-funded position.
They all know it's grant-funded, you know, but it's that bound.
It's hard to build a program around that.
Right, right, you know.
Maybe find a way to make it work.
But I emphasize that the last time I spoke, that we've got to try to continue that because mental health is a big issue.
Yes.
And it's not something the board did say. We got the grant funding two years and done. I think we have to look at.
We heard Super Board would walk in a sack of money.
Yes, I, I mean, I think our goal would be to try to, you know, as long as it seems like it's being helpful to our students, that we would try to work that into our general fund over, you know, a couple of years or however we. But yes, but we can give you some updates.
There are a lot of things that have continued with grant funding as well.
That's true, but we do know that this grant is, is finite, you know, and schools have never had this type of influx.
So, Sarah, is that the way it's written, that it's a two-year grant?
It's actually.
Like Sue had said, if you.
Three-year grant, yeah.
Take that money away from infrastructure upgrades and you put it into the educational, will they allow you to do that? Or you got to kind of break it down to those segments? You know, like, like that sheet showed fencing, drinking, foul.
Right, no, we have a lot of leeway, and they, they gave you categories that you need to be thinking about, and they have to kind of fit into those categories.
There's some definitions, you know, there is leeway, but there's some overall expectations to what that money's for.
And definitely part of those are offering some during the school year, you know, like after-school programs and summer programs are, you have to use a certain percentage of it for that. But, yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's broad, but you do need to hit some of the buckets. The, the thing that we've been hearing is that you need to submit the, the grant for all three years right upfront, which is pretty unusual, but they have been saying that there will be flexibility because, of course, when you put in a grant in 2021 for something in 2024, it may not even exist anymore, you know? So there'll be some leeway for shuffling some of that around, or, you know, we put in two social workers and we decide, you know, I think this is a big hypothetical, but we decide that that's not useful or it's not working, you know, then you could move the money to some other area, or if we decide we want to fund one of those two positions for the third year, we could probably add that into the third year. So, you know, there's, there's going to be, and of course, you're making estimates, all estimates of what things are going to cost. So, um, you know, we could have things that end up costing a little more or things that cost.
Now, you have to use it over a three-year period?
A three-year period, September of 2024. How often do you have to report, do you have periodic reports on it, or is it just at the end of the year? I don't know if we know yet.
So you have, um, they have FS10 expenditure reports that they provide. I don't know how often it is, but typical grants all yearly, so they have those annually. They haven't talked about those, much of those yet, but they do have amendments, which we do on our typical grants anyway, so. typical grants anyway. So on a year-long grant, we make changes to what we thought we were going to spend the money on. Sometimes when we think we're going to do something and it changes or we use money from somewhere else for it. So they said, you know, you can submit as many amendments as you need throughout the entire process.
Thank you.
Public comment. Do we have anybody that wants to participate in the public comment part of our meeting?
Ariel?
I have a question, actually, about masks and the face shields. Are the kids allowed to wear face shields or does it have to be a mask?
I'm sorry, you just say your name for the record.
Sarah Constantino. Thank you.
You have to wear a mask. You have to have a mask. You can wear a face shield over your mask if you like, but you do have to have a mask.
Okay.
It has to cover the nose and the, and the mouth.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn and Sue, come in. All in favor of that?
Aye.
And we at this point will be returning to retreat. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
They stay here.